Oh, really?
Yeah. Every Monday in BRIAM.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Yeah. I know, it's a bit of a track on a Monday.
Meeting of South Hundred and Regional Board Education called to order. Adequate notice is required by the Open Public Meeting Act was provided on December 30th, 2021 by posting a notice with the respective clerks, the City of Lambertville Borough Stockton, and West Amwell, and advertised on December 16th, 2021, in the Hundred and County Democrat Trent Drive newspaper. Back to me.
My release is fully blank, the United States of America, truly relevant, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Go home. Someone else? Here. From Dallas?
Here.
Brian Keats? Here. Sean Lewis? Grace Patrino?
Here.
Diana Prusell?
Here.
Megan Warner?
Here.
Rene Tomarino?
Here.
Kevin Philbless?
Here.
All right. Before we go any further on the agenda, we actually have a special event this evening. So for those that have been following along, a couple of months, about a month or two ago, we passed a new policy, which has us now having a student representative on our Board of Education, which I think is a pretty awesome thing. So to introduce our student representative, I'm going to ask Principal Jennifer McKnight to come to the podium, but before she does, real quick, and you can come on up. Just the process, how we got to this point. So during the summer and right at the start of the school year, we had asked our student population who is interested and perhaps sitting on our board as our student representative, and knowing it's a big commitment, right? There's a meeting every month throughout the entire school year. So on that Monday, you would be dedicated to attending the meeting. We had several students who were interested, and then we put it out to a vote of our student population, and our individual who's with us this evening was the winner of that vote. So Mrs. McKnight, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I'd like to introduce our newly elected student representative to the South Hundred and Board of Education for the 22-23 school year, Ryan Rampell. Ryan?
Sorry.
Ryan is a current junior at South Hundred and is a key member of our football team. He plans on participating in spring track and Night at the Nest. He is currently running for president for the junior class. He is a leader on campus and on the sports field. In his free time, Ryan likes to surf and snowboard. His favorite classes are history and marketing. He plans on attending a four-year university. He is a University of Miami fan and loves watching the University of Pittsburgh football. Congratulations, Ryan.
We're going to have Ryan come up. He now takes a seat at the table. We'll have an official name plate for him probably at our next meeting. But we will ask, so each month now, as part of our agenda, we will have a student rep update. So Ryan will update the board and the public on different happenings that are occurring within the district. So Ryan, I'm going to turn it over to you for your update. You can pull that microphone a little closer to you, and it's on, I believe, if you can give us your update.
All right. My name is Ryan Rampell. I'm a current junior here at South Hundred and. I'm the newly elected student representative to the South Hundred and Board of Education. I'm here to give an update on the great start of the 2022-2023 school year. The school year begun in August this year, and we have just completed our third week of school. It is nice to be back for the first time in a long time without masks. Some of the great things that have been happening in the past three weeks, including the starting of our esports season. This is the second year of esports. This year, they will be competing in the game Super Smash Bros. Ultimate. Team is preparing for their first match September 29. National Honor Society tutoring and peer leadership have had their initial meetings, and we look forward to their programs to help our students. The environmental club has met. This year, the environmental club is focusing on two things so far. Their big project is create design plans to turn the unused courtyard between the A and B wings into a usable outdoor classroom and mindfulness space. Plan is to design it in an environmentally responsible way using native plants. The smaller project is creating like community service projects. The FFA had a mums sale, and meetings have started. The sale was to benefit the FFA program. There are even a few extra mums that are planned to be planted around the school. The cross-country team is having a sneaker drive. This drive is meant for people to donate used sneakers to be given to people who do not own sneakers. Some big news is Chris Heron, an ex-NBA player, he will be speaking at his school on October 11th. He's an ex-NBA player who like overcame a drug addiction, and he's coming to share his story. The SAT will be held at South on October 1st. If you have any questions, you can email Mrs. Fenimore. The homecoming game will be October 14th against Jonathan Dayton, and the dance will be followed on October 15th. For a sports update, our high school fall sports preseason began on August 15th, except football, which began on the 8th. Opening day for all fall sports was September 8th, except for football, which began on the 2nd. Our fall sports include football, cheer, field hockey, cross-country, boys soccer, and girls soccer. Football is starting strong with a record of 3-0. This upcoming Friday, we will have a game against Manville with a 7:00 PM start. Eve Durkey Newman, a senior girls soccer player, has been invited to celebrate 50 years of Title IX at a luncheon in September. Her current NJSIAA female student athletes that will be featured keynote speakers and a roundtable question, Q and A with former NJSIAA student athletes. For NJ.com Player of the Week, we have Braden Himmern. And then for our conference Player of the Week, we have Garrett Swaye. They're both football players. And then for the schools, Antonio Athlete of the Week, we have Braden Himmern, football, and Amanda Santiago on the cheer squad. Middle school sports have begun. Their first practices were September 6th, and opening day was the 19th. Middle school sports include coed soccer, field hockey, and cross-country. We look forward to seeing everyone on Wednesday night for back-to-school night. The night will be in-person and begins at 7:00 at PM. Hope to see everyone there.
Very comprehensive, thank you. Any questions for our student rep from the board?
I have a question, Ryan. The game on Friday is a home game or away game?
It's an away game.
It is an away game, okay. Good luck. I will say also, Ryan, on the football team, never comes off the field, offense, defense, and special teams. One of the few kids that's out there for every play until the game is won, basically.
Yeah.
So good luck on Friday.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our student rep? All right. We'll move on to PTO, PTA, and LAF.
Anybody from the PTO? Say anything, please someone up.
I apologize in advance, I'm going to be a little long-winded tonight. Jessica Hardigan, West Amwell PTO. So we have definitely hit the ground running this year. Our back-to-school outdoor movie night was a huge success. This is a new event for us, starting last year, and it's become very successful. Directly following that, we had Kids Night Out, and that was last Friday. This is a drop-off event staffed by PTO board members, a WAS staff member, typically Ms. Ryan, and we are reaching out to the high school to ask if any seniors want to join us. I completely forgot that before COVID, we used to have a couple of seniors that would come and help, and the kids responded a little better to them than they did to us. So we charge $15 per student and cap it for larger families. Admission includes pizza, popcorn, and a drink during their time with us. We watch a movie, take wiggle breaks. During our breaks, we play trivia, have dance parties, and play group games like partner dodgeball and red light, green light. I think we might have had more fun than the kids during the games, but it was a win-win. These events are very easy to run and so important to our organization as they are a great fundraiser with minimal planning on our end. Room parent selections have been made, and emails have been sent out to our room parents for the year. This program is run by the PTO and really bridges the gap between classrooms and home. It helps take the pressure off of staff members by allowing parents to handle things like classroom parties, classroom supplies, and other miscellaneous items. We have several upcoming events, like back-to-school skate night this Saturday at the Frenchtown Roller Rink, which supports our sixth graders. It's not too late to sign up. Tickets can be purchased on Membership Toolkit, our PTO membership platform. The PTO is sponsoring our first-ever Walkathon. Our Wildcat Walk will be held at WAS Friday, October 7th during school hours. Kids and staff members are encouraged to collect pledges that will go towards continuing our Wildcat alumni scholarships. For those of you who are not aware, for the past 25 years or so, the PTO has been asking senior, graduating seniors from South to write an essay in regard to their time at West Amwell, and what they got out of their experience there. Our goal is to fundraise with the hope of continuing these scholarships for the next 14 years. This means that even next year's kindergartners will be eligible. This is a huge undertaking, and it requires immense support from our Wildcat community and surrounding community members. Pledges can be made online via Membership Toolkit, our membership platform, cash, or checks made out to the WAS PTO. If anyone has any questions, you can reach out to our email or me directly. Trunk Retreat will be held at West Amwell School Friday, October 28th, from 6:30 to 8:00. More information on this event will be coming out soon via backpack mail. Our next Kid Night Out will be Friday, November 5th. This event will be, have a little restructuring. We forgot that we have the YouTube and TikTok generation on our hands, so we need to, we need to step up our game a little bit and take it really slow and move them around a lot more than just sitting and watching a movie for an hour and a half. That's not feasible anymore. So we'll be adding TikTok dance breaks, short movie clips, TikTok challenges, stuff to keep their attention. Our Holiday Shop at WAS will be held December 5th through 9th. More information will be going out via backpack mail, and you can look for emails from us or Mr. Miller. Our sixth grade fundraising is off to a great start. Between their Trenton Thunder outing and lemonade stand, they raised about $2,500. They currently have back-to-school skates night, which I already said, and Madalina's cheesecake's coming up, and their annual clothing drive will be soon. We are currently running a box tops for education contest, and whichever grade has the most box tops scanned from October 1st to June 1st will be winning a prize. The prize will be announced in the spring, so please download the app, update your information in the app, and start scanning your receipts. Our next member meeting will be Monday, October 10th at 7:30 in the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Jeff, what's the closing drawing?
We don't need you.
All right, PTA, anybody from the PTA, please come on up.
Hi, everyone. Nicole asked if I would make the report tonight, and she couldn't be here, so I'm happy to have a return appearance. We got our school year off to a good start with our Ice Cream Social, our annual event that takes place at Ely Field, and beautiful weather, crafts for the kids, ice cream from Oh Wow Cow, so it was a really nice kickoff to the school year for us. Our new spirit store is open. We're very excited about this because we're working with a new vendor, same vendor that West Amwell uses, and it's a local company right here in town, so it's nice to be supporting a local company, and we're really excited about some of the new products. So you can check the, you can get the link on our Facebook page or check your emails, but there are some leopard wear, but there's also just some straight Lambertville wear. So we're hoping to reach out into the community and advertise and hope that it might be sending that good appeal to other members of the community, even those who aren't necessarily affiliated with the school. So check that out. Our picture day is this Friday. We've got our Scholastic Book Fair coming up, October 17th to the 20th, so keep an eye out for links to connect to those two things. And our sixth grade fundraising is going really well. This team is great. They have a couple of events coming up that I wanted to highlight. On October 8th, the two performances at Music Mountain Theater of The Great Pumpkin will benefit the PTA. 20% of all sales go to the PTA that day. So see if you can get up some support to go see The Great Pumpkin on October 8th. Either performance, I think it's 11 and 1, will do. They're currently working on the plans for the Halloween Dance, which we're excited to have again. It's been a while, and that is scheduled for October 21st. And November 4th, they're planning a big party at the New Delview Arcade in Lambertville, which looks like it could be quite spectacular for kids and adults. So just more details to follow on that. So good to see you all.
Thank you.
Stephanie, what's the date on the Delview?
Anyone from LA? Having an update?
Ryan let it off, so we've got a couple of events coming up, but the Chris Heron Community Event, October 11th, is coming up. I actually have seen it. We did it in a district before I moved here, and it is incredibly impactful. I can share with you that your kids are going to remember this, the community will remember this presentation. I think that it's well worth what LAF put towards it to bring it here. So I think that's a great event for our whole community. And then we also have our Golf Day coming up on October, Monday, October 3rd. We still have a few spots available, not that many, but we have a few spots for players. And we also have some sponsorships left. I think we have one premier sponsorship left, and then we have sponsorship levels at $500 and $300. We're really trying to get all 18 holes covered by our $300 sponsorships this year. So please come out and play, or if you know someone who's looking to promote their business and support the schools, let them know we have sponsorships available. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Arrangements, we have none. Moving on to approval in the minutes, see any motion? Second. Special in the minutes. Call this in favor?
Aye.
Next name?
All right. So our first meeting since we started, I can't believe we're entering into the fourth week of school, which is kind of crazy to think about, but we're up and running, and things have gone really well at the start of the year. I do have some updates on a variety of different topics that I wanted to share. First off, just some reminders, it was mentioned already, but it's a big week for us. We get back to in-person, back-to-school nights, which we have not had in a couple of years. So obviously, LPS and West Amwell on Wednesday, and then the middle school and the high school on Thursday. And then we have some dates for our Jewish holidays, where offices and schools will be closed. It was mentioned already about Chris Heron, which I'm going to talk about in my next slide on Tuesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM. And then I mentioned this before, I think in my August update, that we have locked in a date. So as part of our safety review last year, we had talked about offering to the community a gun safety course or kind of training. So we are locked in for Thursday, October 27th at 7:00 PM via Zoom, Be Smart Gun Safety Presentation, and I'll be sending out the Zoom link as we get closer to the date. Just a couple of things to keep in mind. When we talk about Chris Heron, so again, trying to promote this as best we possibly can, it's an amazing thing that the LAF is supporting. So during that, on Tuesday, October 11th, during the school day, Chris will be spending some time with our 9th through 12th graders, running an assembly program. And that evening, it's open to the community and it's free. We are asking, just capacity-wise, for folks to register for tickets, even though it's free. So there's a link here, I've been sending it out. I'll continue to send it out, post it on Facebook. Right now, I think we have about 85 tickets that have been reserved already, so please make sure that if you're interested, you know, register online and get your tickets so you can reserve a spot in our auditorium. But, you know, as was said before, everything I've heard about this presentation has been phenomenal, so we're really looking forward to it for our students and for our community. So I did want to follow up. We talked about this last month, right? Our activity fee. So I just wanted to follow up with a few things about that. So just, you know, again, to talk about how much the activity fee is. So an activity fee is $100 for any student in grade 7 through 12 wishing to participate in any sports clubs, marching band, or co-curricular activities. And that's a one-time payment of $100, and then that allows the student to participate in any activity throughout that entire school year. Parents with more than one child pay a maximum of $200 per household, regardless of the number of children they have attending South Hundred, and so there is a cap for the activity fee. Students who qualify for our federal free and reduced lunch program are not required to pay an activity fee. And we looked at just some of our budget from last year and revenues, and we were, the district generated $21,435 last year in money based on the activity fee. So it is something, we talked about it a little bit at financing facilities last Thursday night. We will continue to talk about it again throughout the year, and then as we get into the budget season, at this point, obviously, it's in the budget, you know, for '22-23, but as we get closer to the spring, and we're talking about a '23-24 budget, we'll continue those conversations. But I just kind of wanted to make sure everyone had the accurate information, and I know there was a question last month about how much revenue we actually generate from the activity fee. So I wanted to give a construction update on our two buildings and kind of what different things we've been working on. So if you've been following along, we sold the bonds back in August, but we actually closed on the bonds on September 8th, a few weeks ago. And with that, there's actually a resolution on the agenda this evening for the board to approve 31 million of that. Remember, the total amount's 33 million. But I talked about last month, working with this company called NJARM, who takes the money, works specifically with municipalities and school districts, will invest the money and work on a schedule of when we're actually going to have to pay contractors, and then whatever interest we can make off of those investments, you know, obviously, that's beneficial for the district. So we decided to keep about 2 million readily accessible for things like Department of Ed fees, architect fees, pre-engineering fees, all different things along those lines. The rest, we're transferring, hopefully, this evening into an account. Keep in mind, any interest that we make on that will help and be applied towards debt service. So that's a big benefit for the taxpayer to reduce the burden of the referendum. And, you know, that's probably over the next two years that we'll go through this process, where we'll be doing various things. We'll have to pull money out, but then money that we don't need at that time, we'll continue to collect interest on. So that's just something to be aware of. Over the last month, we spent a lot of our attention working with our security vendor to plan out cameras and door access controls for the pre-K4 in the 5A building. So I just wanted to show quickly for the pre-K4 building, and it might be a little bit tough to see, but obviously, I'll send this out tomorrow. Basically, you can see, here's kind of the grid that we're working off of, and this is all of our camera access, door access controls, our intercon systems. You can see, it's extensive, right? Wherever you see blue, and then where you see, it looks like a little pencil, there's coverage around the entire building, playground area, hallways, inside, outside, parking lot areas, everywhere you can imagine, and then there are cameras. You know, this is a fisheye camera with a 360 degree inside the main office. So we have an extensive amount to be put in. This is the same contractor that we worked with for this building when we redid all of our security for this building. And then for the 5A, again, similar features, but you can just see as I blow it up, you know, this kind of gives you an idea of the front area, and then all the different things that we have accessible, including, by the way, if you're not aware, something that's fairly new in this industry is called environmental sensors, better known as vape detectors and vape monitors. So, and we actually have them now, which I'm not sure if people are aware, we included them as well, because obviously vaping is an issue that we're all dealing right now, so it's something that we're keeping an eye on. But you can see, obviously, the amount of coverage. And then when you see like little things like AC, that's access control, so that means like all of our electrical closets, custodial closets, our IDF room that has all of our technology, they will all be swipe-based. So they're locked all the time, and in order to access those for security, swipe card in order to be able to do that. So this is a very thorough and extensive plan. We've looked at it inside out. Our campus safety officers have looked at it inside out, and then it has gone from our vendor to our architects to actually formalize on a plan like this as we continue to get closer to eventually when we go out to bid for this project. So that's been about the last four or five weeks that we've been spending time on that in particular. And again, I'll be sending this slide deck out so you can take a closer look at it in the coming days. We did put out just recently, last week, a request for proposal for a construction manager. So this is a big project, right? We have two projects that are going to be simultaneously going on with a lot of activity, a lot of construction workers in two different sites. So it's really, really important that we have someone who oversees that process and makes sure that we're getting the product that we're supposed to be getting. Timelines, shop drawings, everything, weekly meetings, holding with the contractor and the district, keeping everything on task. So we put out an RFP, Request for Proposal. It's due back to us in the beginning of October, and we'll basically have an opportunity then to bring to the board two or three different candidates that we'll interview, actually do a formal interview. If you look at the RFP, you'll see we lay out the specs pretty significantly as far as the qualifications we're looking for. So it's going to have to be someone who has quite a bit of experience in school construction, knows their way around the construction site, and then depending upon the cost, we'll kind of weigh all those factors. Hopefully, we'll make a decision as far as who that person will be, and then when we start the process, hopefully in January with breaking ground on the 5A building, that person's going to play a major role onsite in the district for the next 18 months to two years. So that's something that we're working on as well. And then we also have been working with our architect on all of our digital signage. So things like the digital display boards that you see on the wall here, obviously, we have them, you know, more than what we have in this building throughout the entire pre-K4 and 5A for a lot of different messaging. We're looking at, you know, signage for outside of the building, all of our technology features in each of our classrooms, you know, in our cafeteria spaces, in our gym spaces, we're going to have audio systems, we're going to have projectors, so we can use them for large meeting spaces for the community. All those different pieces, we're working on that now to kind of finalize as we work with our contractor. So that's been the major emphasis, and we'll continue to be leading up to probably the end of October. So just a couple of other things I wanted to make you aware of, if you're not aware of it, just the construction legal update, because that has not ended. So the West Amwell Township Committee and Private Citizen Group did file an appeal, even though the bonds were issued, and that's ongoing. The other piece that I want to make you aware of, and if you're not aware of this, because I don't think a lot of the community was aware, the West Amwell Township Committee passed a resolution at their recent meeting requesting the county superintendent to investigate the advisability of withdrawing from the regional school district. And you can see, and I kind of highlighted underneath there right here, where in the resolution, we believe we owe it to the residents of West Amwell to apply to the county superintendent of school to investigate this as a possible withdrawal. And then at the bottom of the resolution, it talks about either a full or a part. I really don't know what that means, to be quite honest with you, because in the resolution, there was no detailed plans of what that would even mean and what that would even look like. So at this point, it is on the county superintendent's desk. I had some conversations with him about it as far as next steps, and we'll be providing updates as far as, you know, what will be the next steps. But with the resolution, there was no plan of what that would be and where kids would go and what that would look like. So, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it, because it is something that I don't think a lot of people are aware of. All right. So it is that time of the year where we're going to, I'm going to go through our district goals for 2022-2023. We have five again. Some of them are common themes that you've seen before. Goal number one was a goal last year of the first time for the district, and this is a really important goal. We talk about instruct- this is a really important goal, we talk about instruction in our classroom. We spent time looking at what's called blended and personalized learning techniques. Last year, we had a cohort of teachers who worked specifically with a consultant in the district, um, on-the-ground coaching, uh, in the classroom with our teachers, it went very, very successfully, um, a lot of great feedback, so this year is actually year two with Cohort Two. So we have another round of teachers who just went through in the month of August, a full-day, six-hour professional development training, and then our visitations actually start next week, where our consultant will be back in district and be working with our teaching staff again in the cohort, and then we have five two-hour professional development sessions throughout, um, the year on different days after school where we'll be doing additional professional development. Our cohort, one teacher from last year are involved in this work and are working with and supporting our Cohort Two teachers. Um, another big piece is the implementation of our district instructional coaches, two positions that we never had before, so they are playing hand-in-hand with this model, working closely with our consultant, and their main job is to support on a daily basis all the teachers in our district as far as the type of instruction that we want to provide our students on a daily basis. So I'm really excited about that, and then we're also gonna be working on collecting data from students and teachers who are in the cohorts and in these classes, um, and looking at focus groups as well to really start measuring impact of where we're going as far as this instructional model. So this is really important, and to sum it up without getting into too, too much of the weeds, this is really a focus on maximizing the teacher in a classroom, small group instruction rather than whole group instruction, and making the teacher accessible to as many students as possible in the course of a lesson, that's really, really important. So that's what that's all about. And kind of going along with that, um, and this is district-wide, again, focusing on classroom instruction, uh, we're introducing to the entire population of our teaching staff what's called our core practices framework, that we were working specifically over the last year with just our blend and learning cohort. Now we're branching it out to our entire staff, and when I click on this link, you can kind of see quickly some of the different things that we're asking teachers to kind of focus on, and do some self-assessment about classroom culture and really giving student ownership and engagement. So facilitating instead of kind of the teacher-in-control, really having the teach, or the students take the lead, um, data-informed practice, so data-driving your decision-making, and really focusing on rigor and mastery. So as part of our professional development this year, all of our teaching staff are gonna have to self-assess on these different areas, and then as part of our professional development plan, they're gonna focus on one or two of those areas with some colleagues in professional learning community work, and they're actually gonna videotape some of their lessons and then collaborate with colleagues and talk about, related to these practices, you know, what did I do well, where are areas of focus, feedback, totally non-evaluative, that's not what this is about, it's about growing as professionals. So this is, will be a requirement for all our teaching staff, um, it's a, I guess sometimes it can be, um, a little uneasy for a teacher to videotape themselves and then watch it back, but it is a very meaningful professional development opportunity to kind of see yourself in the different things that go on as far as your instruction goes. So I'm really excited about that, and our district coaches are gonna support that work, which is great. Um, goal three, so again, as we look at equity, right, and that's been a common theme for us in the district, um, we just talked in our, uh, School and Community Committee about an exercise that our administrative team does each and every summer as part of our retreat, where we really dig into school-level data and take a look at different areas and and kind of where we are in different categories, and, uh, how does that drive our decision-making in areas of focus that we wanna look at, things like AP classes, honors classes, special education, Title I services, a lot of different pieces that go into play, so we continue to do that, and we'll do that on an annual basis. And then we implemented a new software program called Talking Points, so the advantage of Talking Points is we are using it with our Spanish-speaking parents, because it is a texting system where our teachers can have two-way communication with parents in their home language, right, which can be a challenge sometimes, so a lot of times with the way we've been communicating in the past, it's only been one-way communication, where we give information to our Spanish-speaking parents. Now, our teachers can have two ways to engage those parents. There is the possibility to use it with all parents, we may get to that at some point, but for this year, we just piloted with our Spanish-speaking parents, because that's an area of focus that came out of our ESL review last year, um, so that is up and running, uh, and I think that's gonna have a lot of benefits for overall engagement. Late buses are in action, so they've been running since the first day of school, I've had the opportunity to pop out there on several occasions, we have kids using all of them, um, and even our clubs and activities kind of just ramped up last week, and they will continue over the next week, so we'll even have more participation, and that was a barrier that we had identified in the past, um, for folks who may not be participating in activities because of transportation. Uh, DI, EI team, so in the past, we had called ourselves kind of cultural competency team, now, we're really called, um, diversity, equity, inclusion, the committee has grown, which is a positive, and we're doing all kinds of different things throughout the year, we just did a big read-aloud at the elementary last Friday, um, for Hispanic Heritage Month, and a lot of different activities that we have planned throughout the year, and some of them will be student-led driven as well. And then a big thing right now is also, we're in the midst of the review of our special education program, so I had been sending information out to parents, I'm excited to say that we have eighteen parents that will have joined a focus group to meet with PCG, which is Public Consulting Group, they're the ones that are doing our special education review, so that's coming up, um, next week actually on the twenty-eighth, where we have eighteen parents who've agreed, which that's a good number, they were really surprised at that turnout, to actually be with the consultant, and that's something where we're not there, right? It's just for our parents who've had some experience in special education, and they have a chance to answer some questions from our consulting group. So goal four, um, again, SCL, which I think is always gonna be there, I'm happy to report that we trained all of our staff on August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in youth mental health first aid, it was an extensive eight-hour training, two hours that was required on their own, online, um, very beneficial, we all, we went through it ourselves, and, uh, it was a very powerful thing, and I think a great tool and a toolbox for our staff as a first line of defense. We have our provider from First Children who started with us the first week of school, she's working, she already has a caseload that's been built, keep in mind, one of our goals was to hire another mental health clinician, um, and that person really to be focusing on some of our most challenging cases, to make sure we're providing support, um, you know, both individually to the student, to the family, and then also community resources that may be out there for additional support. So that's going well, um, I'll, I'll skip to the last bullet, and then I'll get back to the third, cause I know some questions about this at our last meeting, and I want to share some more information. So we're in the midst of our therapy program, right, our dog therapy program, we got training tomorrow at four o'clock, um, all of our dogs graduate, step one of the process, we have like six steps, so we have all the way until May, until we're fully certified, but it's really exciting, we're now several weeks into phase two, we do it every Tuesday afternoon from four to five, and that's awesome, because we have nine people that are doing that, and our teaching staff and counselors that are doing that, they're not getting paid to do that, they're volunteering on their own time to stay active for an hour every Tuesday for an entire year almost, just about, we started on July nineteenth, so it's a pretty, um, extensive program, and again, our goal is to have a therapy dog in every building every day. Um, so as we get in, I think after winter break, we'll probably start, you know, you may start seeing dogs more at our buildings once they get to that point. And then the last one I want to talk about is social-emotional learning, and we talked a little bit last month about Satchel Pulse, and there was some questions about that, so I wanted to clarify it as well. So Satchel Pulse is a software vendor that we've been working with specifically to start doing, uh, benchmark assessments in the area of social-emotional learning, so the one thing that I wanted to kind of just clarify is that this is all focused on what's called the Castle Framework, collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, if you know anything about SCL, Castle is the place to go, they've been in existence for about twenty to twenty-five years, it's a great resource, so Satchel Pulse is aligned, and the areas that we're specifically focusing on with these assessments are self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship-building, self-management, and social awareness. And it may be a little bit difficult to see, but I gave some examples of the type, cause I know there was some concerns about that, about the types of questions that are at, asked as part of the assessment, so here's just a little bit of background, first of all, it's, it's aligned to the Castle Framework, we're looking at giving two assessment windows, and they're self-assessed, so students will self-assess themselves, we're looking at the first window to be August twelfth through October third, the second window to be March twenty-second through April fourth, again, these are the five areas that we're looking for students to do some self-assessment on, there's twenty-five questions on each assessment, there's resources for our teaching staff, so once we get the data and we kind of take a look to see what trends are, there's lesson plans that are already available for our teaching staff for activities that may be focused on, for example, social awareness or self-management, or whatever it may be. I also included, cause I know there was a question, here's the examples of the types of questions that students would be asked, um, and I'll blow that up the best I can, but again, examples like, you know, and it's broken down by elementary, middle, and high school, you know, I have confident in my decisions and my actions, so students basically will have a sliding scale and have to basically move on the sliding scale, you know, where they kind of fall between the zero and the ten, and kind of do some self-assess. So I'm not gonna go through all of them, but for parents, you'll have the opportunity to kind of look at all the different types of questions that are available, and I, and I think this may have been a concern, and I wanna kind of, and this is also a resource, this is not, and you can see there, a mental health screener, all right, that's not what this is about, um, you know, we're not diagnosing anyone, that's not what this is about, it's totally geared towards the Castle Framework and those five areas, um, and right now, what we're using this for is just for students to self-assess, see kind of where things are, have some programming that goes around it based on the data, and then in the spring, self-assess again and see what the differences are, and see what type of progress is made throughout that process. So I'm excited about that, and then, um, yes.
You said, um, I think I interrupted, but it, on there, you said that the first assessment window will be from August?
October twelfth, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's November, sorry. I'll fix that. I will fix that. Um, all right, and then our last goal, and this is a big one, um, we gotta start preparing for twenty-four, twenty-five, right? So we have a new district configuration, um, construction will begin hopefully mid-year this year for the five-eight building, um, preparing for the renovation of the LPS school into a district pre-K four school. We're actually, tomorrow morning, I'm going with Wanda and Andrew to do a walkthrough of the St. John's School, um, with our county, uh, business administrator, just to kind of lay out what everything's gonna look like, you have to get county approval as far as this process, so this is step one of that, um, and then staffing, right, of what our new configuration's gonna look like now that we'd have a pre-K four, a five-eight, and then a nine-twelve. And then educational planning, so what's the schedule gonna look like for a pre-K four, what's the schedule gonna look like for a five-eight, and what are the opportunities students are gonna have for that, and then what's the schedule and the academics gonna look like for nine-twelve, as well as what type of program expansion are we gonna do now that we'll have some additional space in this building to be able to do it with, once our seventh and the eighth graders move to the five-eight building? So those are all things, quite honestly, we started as part of our summer retreat in August, we'll continue to have those conversations throughout the year, and that will be an ongoing basis as we prepare, you know, really starting, you know, next summer with some significant stuff as far as the move to St. John's, and, and hopefully by that time, we'll be four or five months into the five-eight building under construction. So that's, that's an ongoing goal, will be one for next year as well. And then the board goals, so it's important that the board talks about goals and, and what that's gonna look like, so if you're not aware, our strategic plan has expired, right? So some of you may have been involved in that, the last go-around, it's a pretty extensive process with community focus groups and a facilitator, a lot of community involvement, so, um, we are, the board would like to in the spring, start that process again, it probably will carry into the fall with the goal of sometime by mid-year next year, us developing a new five-year strategic plan, which the timing's kind of perfect for the new district configuration, we'll kind of go right into that. So look for more information on that, obviously, we're gonna want a, a lot of community input on that, and there'll be a lot of focus group meetings, um, so that is really gonna be, that will be a big undertaking, that's a big pro, process. And then the second one, which was similar to last year, is just providing me with the support and the resources, obviously, we have a lot of things in the five goals that I shared already, a lot of nuances and pieces to it, and supporting me, you know, in the district in those goals and achieving those goals. That's all I have, so any questions from the board first, before we go to public comment on any of the information that I presented in my update?
If you'd like to highlight things, cause I know that there's a lot of information shared, and I think that it's really, um, worth restating, that we had some concerns for the construction and for the bond sale, that the interest rate was gonna be very high based on what's happening nationally, and then we got a significantly better rate than we were expecting because of our strong credit score.
Correct. Three-point-eight-two.
Yeah. So now we're also investing those funds to build interest on that, so that it will offset the tax burden.
That is correct.
Those are really important things.
Any other questions?
Public comment, open to a public comment on any agenda items on the agenda, it's a reminder before we start public comments, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct, they need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. A member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period of public comment, the member of the board charged running the public meeting shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during a public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior, such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption, use of, any comments seen as abusive, obscene, or inflammatory, members of the public are invited to address the board or any manner for a maximum of three minutes during the portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name and municipality. Public comment is now open. Anybody like to make a comment?
Hi, Sherardarki, uh, Lamberville, um, just three quick things, um, because, um, a couple of the things, uh, Mr. Souza, that you responded to are things that I've brought up in the past, and so first of all, I just want to say, um, I'm so glad that you started, uh, running the late bus, thank you all for doing that, it, from what I hear, it's been a success, people are using it, so thank you for doing that. Also, um, I know that I had brought up both the, some concerns about Satchel Pulse, um, and I had asked about the activity fee, so I really appreciate that those are things that you were then discussing, um, offering more information about, and I find that, um, I, I really appreciate that what I'm saying, um, then is discussed and that you are giving me some follow-up information, so thank you so much, all of you.
Hi, I'm Kate Merzinski from West Anwell, um, I appreciate the late bus too, I think it's a great idea, but I did want to ask the board if you would consider, um, making that a little more inclusive, right now, it does not pick up the kids who play at, uh, the alternative field at Hewitt for soccer, if there were a student who lived on that street, you would drop the student off on the way home, um, I think with a little bit more thought and planning, you could probably include that team, um, and let them have the benefit of that service, so I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to ask you to consider that. Um, and I just wanted to give you some information, despite Kevin's brilliant announcement at the beginning, that I'm sure this meeting was noticed, as it should be, the website does say that the meeting is next week, the district website, so I know that's not the official publication, I'm not saying that this wasn't duly noticed, but, um, the school website is in conflict. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Matt Larkin, I live in Lamberville, um, and so what Kate did, it's actually different dates on different places on the website.
It's the upcoming events, it's the issue, under the board, yeah, the board's right, under the board, but on that upcoming event.
And, uh, I also want to say, you know, thank you about the late bus, I, because I've also heard it really does help other kids do things, so, um, thank you for bringing that on. Thank you.
Who else?
Hello, I'm Michaela Burdysaw, West Anwell, I want to second that, thank you so much, it's great to have conversations that are progressing and ongoing, um, I am still a little curious as to why we do have the activity fee, only because these are, my brain doesn't like to let things go, so I would love to see how that conversation continues, I would like it to not just stay on one slide, um, but the beautiful thing is that you're demonstrating that we can trust you to do that, and, and that means a great deal, and it's a great way to start the year, so, thank you.
Anybody else? We'll have another one at the end?
We don't have any.
No, nobody's replied, well, there, right?
No.
All right, uh, we'll close down the first public discussion, we'll have another one at the end, uh, we'll be moving on to our agenda now, buildings, ground, transportation, finance, and safety.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, so we-
Um, so we met on Thursday. Um, as usual, a lot of things that I was going to talk about in my report were talked about in the superintendent update, so I won't beat a dead horse with it. Um, so a couple of things that you're going to see on the items for approval, um, some good amount of vendor contracts, green consulting, um, just a little bit of a footnote, that's for bilingual support and services. Um, again, the Chris Heron talks, I know we talked about that quite a bit in such a great program. Uh, it's also worth mentioning, we were initially supposed to work with Hundred and Central on that, and for whatever reason, they couldn't make that happen, so LAE F was able to really kick in more support to make sure that that happened for our kids. So I think that's worth noting and thanking LAE F for that. Other things to mention, our full barn update that has not been started yet, um, it's a running joke in every meeting, supply chain issues, supply chain issues, but in the world we live in now, so supply chain issues. We're delayed by concrete this time, but all the other materials are in at this point. Um, as mentioned, we're going to be voting on a resolution to transfer 31,412,000 to the NJ Norm account, and that's so we can, you know, hopefully gain some interest on those funds, which, as Ronnie mentioned, we can then, um, give back to the taxpayers in the form of reducing the debt service. Transportation updates, um, I believe next week is when bus cameras are going to be beginning installation, um, and that project should hopefully be completed by the end of that week. Something you'll probably hit on in personnel, um, but we did, um, just bring on a transportation supervisor and hired a new bus driver, so we're making good headway on the ongoing shortage Those are all the main updates I have. So with that, I'm going to ask two items, A through J.
Second. Any discussion? If we have any questions?
Uh, one, one thing, um, item I, what was the final, um, amount of that, Andrew? So item I is items that the district is selling. There are items that we no longer need, but they may still have some value. Uh, at one, at one time, we may have, have given those away or disposed of them, uh, but we've, uh, one of our custodians has been putting them up on a, uh, on an auction site, and we actually made several thousand dollars last month. Um, and so what is the number?
Eight hundred and sixty-eight.
Oh, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, so, uh, for stuff that we otherwise would have disposed of.
Any other questions? Andrew Ropel?
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ken Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Chris Chulley?
Yeah.
Dana Fussell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yeah.
Ronnie Tomlino?
Yeah.
Kevin Kowalski?
Personnel. Anything else?
Um, I can do it. So just a couple of things we talked about, um, as, uh, was mentioned before, we do have a new transportation secretary, Roger Ford, who's starting with us tomorrow, and will be handling and taking over all of our transportation, so we welcome Roger aboard. Um, we also have a couple of job descriptions on there, so it was time to revisit our secretary job description and our bilingual secretary job description. You will stay on the agenda tonight. Um, unfortunately, Christina Castro is going to be taking a little break, um, from the district for a little while, and we're going to be looking for, if you know anyone, that's a big loss, because Christina's our bilingual translator and secretary. So we are looking for someone for about three months as a replacement. So if you know of anyone, um, even within the community, because one of the most important things that Christina has done is built trust with the community. So it's not just about being bilingual, it's about that trust factor. So if anyone's aware of someone even within the community that might be able to fill that void for a couple of months, please reach out to me. Um, right now, the position is posted, so we're looking for a replacement.
We need a motion, motion to move item A and B.
Come on.
Second. For discussion, any discussion on items A and B? Andrew Ropel?
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Chris Chulley?
Yeah.
Dana Fussell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yeah.
Ronnie Tomlino?
Yeah.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Curriculum and Technology Committee?
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology Committee met on September the 8th via Zoom. It was a fairly short meeting, so I only, I have a few, uh, items to briefly touch on. Our preschool program, uh, this is our first year of the full district free preschool. Uh, we had room for everyone in the district who wanted a seat. Uh, we have no one on our waiting list currently. Uh, right now, there are 38 kids in the preschool program. That is, um, 15 three-year-olds and 23 four-year-olds. Uh, they are in three classes of between 12 and 14 students, uh, we expect to add five more students during the school year. So that'll bring that to 43, but still, we still have capacity beyond that for a few more kids. Um, the district, uh, last week received the results of the, uh, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which is a standardized test, the NJ SLA. Um, the students took that test in the spring, and so we have mailed home, uh, results of those tests, uh, along with a cover letter that includes some information about the test and, and how parents can access the information, uh, through a portal, okay? Uh, we will be doing a presentation at our October board meeting, uh, going over the results of that assessment. There was an email sent out from the district today about that. Uh, there is another standardized test that we take, because we're in New Jersey, and we love to be mandated to take standardized tests, and that is the Start Strong Assessment. Uh, that, our kids will start taking that in the last two weeks of September, so basically that's coming up right now. We'll do makeup testing as needed in early October, and we will be reporting out those results at a future board meeting, possibly November, maybe December, we don't know when we're going to get. Uh, one thing that we, uh, that we do have for this evening to, uh, approve on the agenda is the remote instruction plan for 2022-23. And so that is in the event that the state closes down in-person learning, as they did for the COVID pandemic, uh, this will be the plan that will go into effect so that we can continue with remote learning. Um, it, I will ask Mr. Souza, but I believe it's very similar, if not exactly the same, as the plan we adopted last year.
Don't get nervous. I know when you hear that. We are now required, every school district in the state of New Jersey is now required to do this on an annual basis, where we have to approve it by the board and provide a resolution to the county superintendent by September 30th. Um, so yes, it's very similar to what we were doing, uh, with scheduling and one-to-one and all the different things, just had a memorialized in the plan. So this is something moving forward, you're probably going to see on an annual basis.
Again, we did this last year in the fall, approved a similar plan. Uh, it will only go into effect if the schools close. This has nothing to do with, we're not, there's no remote snow days or any of that stuff. We're back to, basically, you know, back to normal unless, unless we are told that conditions have changed significantly. Uh, and with that, I will make a motion to approve, uh, that remote instruction plan, uh, for 2022 and 2023. Thank you, Ronnie.
For discussion, any discussions in the way to make? All right. Andrew?
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Chris Chulley?
Yeah.
Dana Fussell?
Yeah.
Megan Warner?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ken Gallagher?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomlino?
Yeah.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Mark Pauls? Tracy?
Okay, so, um, first read of your agenda tonight is related to, um, about working with law enforcement. So it just puts down the kind of the rules of engaging and bringing in law enforcement at different points, but, uh, it will be on just first read for now. We're awaiting the prosecutor's office to provide the copy for us to sign and agree on, and we expect that January 2023. So until that time, we'll follow our current policy that was put in place last year. Um, we also began discussions, um, and you won't see this on the agenda, but on our present employees, and we'll continue those discussions, and very possibly maybe have a first read next month. Um, and then for second read is the policy need that we put into, um, on the agenda last month, which is around the harassment, the detention, bullying, and research revisions coming forward, and so that's, uh, that's up for approval as well. So I would like to, oops, sorry.
Let's make our motion.
Yeah. Item A and B.
And I'll second the motion.
For discussion?
Yeah, um, Tracy, can you explain what the differences or the revisions are in the cooperation?
There are a lot. There are a lot. They're highlighted in the agenda, so there's quite a bit. Tony here probably summarized them, but there's a lot.
Just a couple of things. Um, so the state of New Jersey now has, so in the past, districts had to develop their own, uh, what we call HIB form, where either a parent or a staff member, whoever would fill out. Now, New Jersey has created their own forms, which are on now on our website. Um, there is a form specifically for staff to fill out, and then a different form for parents, guardians, or caregivers to fill out. So that's one of the changes. Um, something else that's a change is that now the principal is required to document, um, so if you know anything about our timeline of HIB investigations, the first thing that happens is the principal would call parents of any perpetrators or possible victims involved to let them know that there has been a HIB report filed and that there will be an investigation by our HIB specialist. The principal now has to document when that conversation took place and how it took place, which hopefully will be over the phone. Um, that was never a requirement of the new law before. Um, and then each district is also required to have what's called, um, a climate coordinator for the district, uh, which kind of works hand-in-hand with the department head, uh, so that's a new piece as well to the law.
There's a lot of changes in the language, too, in terms of that.
One of the big pieces, which was, we talked about, which was an option, was that, um, principals could have the option to review a HIB case and decide whether or not it should be investigated. Um, I was not comfortable with that for a lot of different reasons. I think the process that we've been using has been a good one. We investigate all things that are brought forward. I didn't like the idea of, um, and it's nothing against our principals, but I don't like the idea of a principal making a decision where some things we're investigating and some things we're not. I'd like to have a universal, consistent process for all of our HIB. So we did not include that as an option in our policy. We took it out.
Okay. So a lot of it has to do with the HIB.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the HIB policy.
Yep.
Are you asking about the HIB policy?
I'm asking about the cooperation with law enforcement.
Yeah, all right. So that's completely different.
That's completely different. All, all of that, there were some statute changes. That's related to, so we have something that legally were required to sign every year, which is called a memorandum of agreement, and it comes from the attorney general's office, eventually down to the prosecutor's office. And basically, it's a list of guidelines where, um, we have to interact with local law enforcement and follow specific guidelines. So typically, in October of each year, we'll have a meeting, I will, with, um, representatives from our local law enforcement. We'll review the memorandum, and then we all sign it, and then copies, and then we have to send it to the prosecutor's office. Um, I was told on Friday at a county roundtable meeting that we're probably not going to get the updated agreement until January. So at this point, this policy just talks about how we're required by law to follow the agreement, um, until we get the updated agreement, and it's probably, if you look at this policy, there's just some statutory updates with lettering and numbering. Um, we'll follow the old one that we signed last year.
Okay. And that, that MOA is linked from the policy as well?
Yeah, the MOA, um, it's long. It's probably about eighty-something pages long. So I can share, you know, with the board, and you guys can look through it of all the different areas that it kind of focuses on.
Okay. Offered by the AG and from the prosecutor's office.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That would be fine.
Yep.
Just a, so again, just a note on, on process, right? We, as a policy, we are a board, as a, we are a policymaking board. We set direction, and then the administration carries that out. But so our first readings, those, that policy will be posted upon, that's available to you. You'll be able to see that. Um, and you can send changes to Tracy or to Mr. Souza, um, and, or anybody else on the board, for that matter. This is the time, actually, that if you haven't looked at it yet, you should be looking at these policies and reading them and sending in any concerns that you have, changes, whatever. The second reading, so for, for example, tonight, we did the, we are well, we are about to possibly vote on a second reading to approve the harassment policy. Once we have voted on that as a second reading, that will become, that will go into effect as our policy. That is not to say that you cannot then come up and say, hey, I have a concern about this policy, and then that would go to the policy committee, and we would discuss it in that committee, but that's, you know, just a reminder to let the public know, that's how, that's kind of the process of how we do these things.
And just keep in mind that we have a, a policy company, Strauss Esme, so we get quarterly updates, they follow the law, they have a lot of lawyers that follow all the changes in the law, and then they literally tell us, you know, what policies are mandated to be reviewed and adopted, um, and that's kind of our guidelines of how we set our agenda for our monthly meeting.
The public always has access to both first reading and second reading.
Yep.
Does the public have access to the first reading?
Oh, yeah.
It's on the agenda.
Right on the agenda.
Why not? Everybody can see it.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Jim. There they are.
Through the window, it's the, hi.
All right, we'll start right at Chris Chulley.
Uh, yes.
Dana Fussell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ken Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
You know, that sound.
Ronnie Tomlino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Community, Ronnie?
We maybe met, we have a pretty large agenda, but of course, Tony, it's such a long list of things, well, give us a quick overview. One of the first things we talked about was the new student support number, um, and what that process looked like, which Tony talked about. And one aspect that, that when New Jersey legislation comes out, sometimes it just kind of finds our details. So one of the things that, that we are considering, whether or not we would want to put it in our policy, is, um, when handed, candid to our family members, correct, for education. We talked about a new student survey, um, so McKnight sent out a survey to the seventh graders regarding their transition to middle school, just to try to see if there was any frequently asked questions that came out. And Tony is also drafting a family survey, survey for students that are needed to.
Send it out to them.
Tony sent out a family survey for students, yeah, um, as a way of engaging parents from early on in the process and determining if there's any unanswered questions for those kids. Um, we talked, Tony's talked about the interim accessibility plan. Um, there was a meeting with Tony and Mr. Connas with Scott Elliott, who's the director of the Progressive Center for Independent Living. Um, he helped with conducting basically, uh, an, um, review of the current LPS building and, um, will assist in generating a plan for accessibility. Um, and he also agreed to review the designs for the new middle school, right? And look at the, um, St. John's School prior to this. So, um, and also, um, Tony's going to work with a district parent who uses a wheelchair to further identify any solutions to his personal needs for accessibility. We talked about communication of district events. I think that the district, uh, has a lot of different wonderful things going on, and we do a great job of, uh, communicating that to families through the newsletters and the listservs, but sometimes the, the broader community doesn't have some of that information. So Tony is looking at drafting press releases for different upcoming events and things that are, that are interesting and unique within our school system, such as the expansion of the mental health services. We talked about teacher and staff retention. So Tony and the administrators are going to evaluate what the current practices are that support staff and then look at ways that, that we could add additional resources that, that increase staff satisfaction and retention. And Tony gave a lot of information about how Latinx students are supported in the college front planning process. College planning process is difficult for many families and that can be particularly an issue when there's a language barrier or there's a transportation barrier, a lot of different things. So counseling staff and administrative staff have identified some specific barriers that are commonly experienced by the students. So there's efforts to target each of those barriers. We were using a program called Bridges to Success with Rare Valley Community College and we'll continue that. And we'll also look to share resources with other area districts that have a large Latinx population. One of the key ways of getting out information is a relationship with a trusted member of the community. And so Tony is looking to build additional partnerships to help disseminate accurate information with families. And then as Tony talked about, we, we talked about the DEI data. So the admin team did a data dig at their retreat and really looking at specifics about demographics with patterns within things like our AP classes, grades, discipline, and parole and special education. And one of the things that was noted was that our current system, Aspen system, isn't very easy to work with and the system that we're evaluating for future use will be much easier in pulling that kind of data. And the admin team is, is, you know, uses that, the information from that data dig to really look at where are their discrepancies and ident, identify possible pauses and then just establish a plan that mitigates those barriers. I have nothing to mention. Questions?
Questions? Our group information, need a motion to just item A, that harassment based on the report. If?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prover.
All right. It brings us to our second part of the public participation. It's going to be open for maximum of three minutes. You may come up and make a statement on any of the agenda items, stuff that night or anything you have on your mind. Anybody like to come say something?
Member Phil. I did look at the agreement with law enforcement and I have one question and it's, I guess it's a question and a concern. It says, "Specific procedures and responsibilities of school district staff for notifying parents in instances of law enforcement interviews involving their children shall be consistent with the MOA and the following. School officials shall not notify the student's parents in instances of suspected child abuse or neglect. School officials shall notify the student's parents when the student is the target of the law enforc, of the law enforcement investigation. And in all other instances, school authorities shall permit law enforcement authorities to determine whether or when a student's parent should be contacted." And I am curious, under what kind of circumstances, law enforcement would be able to interview my child without me being informed? So I don't know if you can give me specific examples right now, but what I'm requesting is that in the MOA, that that is very specific because as a parent, and I understand if, if they think that I am abusing my child, that they won't inform me. I get that. But in what other instances might law enforcement possibly be allowed to interview my child without informing me first? Anyway, if anybody can answer that, great. If not, I guess what I'm asking is, as you revise this, that's way too vague because it leaves it wide open, saying they can talk to my child and I don't want that. I'd like to know specifically when, exactly when and under what circumstances my child can be interviewed without my knowledge. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Matt Lark in Lambeville. So first, I want to thank everybody. Ryan, thank you for stepping up and joining the board and sitting through the meeting. Hopefully you still enjoy it.
I told him he could leave early, but he didn't do it. I got to give you credit for that.
So, but I am happy to see, you know, the, the board going through and the, you know, the referendum is kind of moving forward, maybe not. The other thing I want to let you know is I am on the Lambeville Library Board of Trustees. And so this week is banned book week. So I just really want to encourage everyone to kind of take a look at that and think about, you know, going out and buying a book that's banned just to be supportive of that. Thank you.
Matt, you don't want to encourage people to buy books. You want them to go to the library.
He's saying fight book banning. Fight the book bans by buying.
So Michael Strauss from West Amwell. I actually want to kind of pivot off first of the conversation that happened earlier about the policy. And it just occurred to me how much easier Board Docs is and how like I can come and like read everything that I know is coming and be prepared for the meeting. And I really thank you for bringing it in, whoever decided that that was the case. But it really does help facilitate communication with the public. In my perusal today, I also noticed, and Matt kind of jumped on this before me, but we, we were disposing of books and I, I of course, like the alarms go off in Michael's head of like, oh my gosh, what's going to be disposed? So I read through all the titles and luckily, no banned books in there. But I do want to, to also encourage us to take a look, as it is banned book week, at, at what our libraries and what our educators are offering to our students now. So I spoke about this probably about two years ago now, about auditing both classroom libraries and auditing our, our individual school libraries for the amount of diverse creators, different voices that are available to our students. I, I didn't hear anything back from it. I think as we start combining the district schools, it's a perfect opportunity for us to do that and really take a look at what we are, we are putting out there for our kids to borrow from the library. I'd also like to take a look at some of the books that are being used. I know my kids did The Wild Robot two years in a row and we have opportunities, I think, to bring in other voices and it would be great to look at the books that are being used in the classroom as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that can make a statement? All right. The session is now closed. We do have a reason to go into executive session tonight?
No.
We need a motion to go into the executive session.
You need a motion?
No moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you propose a statement? What she carries?
Megan, you'll be dropping off?
Uh, yeah, Ronnie's going to call me in.
Okay. Thank you.
Action.
You have to be in person.
Got to be in person.
So if you can just text.
I need a minute.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Twenty-three, all right. And.
Motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Have a great night.